Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for joining us today in the Accountability Committee. And I appreciate everybody's attendance, especially the superintendent from New Haven, the board chair and her team. And I'm Estela Lopez and I chair the Accountability Committee today. And we are planning to have a very productive conversation with New Haven regarding their school opening. So the first item in the agenda is really the approval of the minutes of the May 20 meeting. So I will need a motion.
I move, we approve the minutes.
I second.
Woody.
Thank you. Any questions coming? Then hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Thank you. The second item of the agenda is the New Haven Public Schools reopening plan through remote learning update. So we, again, we are very grateful that you're able to attend today's meeting to share with us the strategies that you're using and provide us with an update. So Irene, if you want to introduce them and provide some opening remarks, I would appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Lopez. The purpose, as you mentioned about this meeting, is to provide you with an update of the ongoing work to support all learners in New Haven, adults and students. And across multiple meetings, we have been working closely with Dr. Tracy and her team to provide technical assistance and the opportunity to check in on the status of Remote Learning Implementation Plan, to discuss our monitoring plan and our priorities. And as a reminder, the priorities are connectivity, special populations, academic programming, support of students, families and staff, and communication. At this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Tracy, Superintendent of New Haven Public Schools, to introduce her team and provide a brief update on each of these priorities to the committee. Dr. Tracy?
Yes, thank you so very much. And may I say good afternoon to the state board and my favorite team of people who have always been working with us in terms of technical assistance. I must say, we have received real great support from our state team in the work we have to do here in New Haven. I have with me here Tiffany Jackson, who is a Director of Special Education, Gemma Joseph-Lumkin, the Youth Family Community Director, Keisha Red Hannens, Instructional Superintendent, Dr. Paul White, Instructional Superintendent, Pedramin Dialanda, Director of English Learners, Yvonne Valesquez, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction, Dr. Michelle Sherman, Research Evaluation and Analytics, Mr. Phil Panama, sure, Phil is on here. He is my CFO. He had a death in his family just last night, so he may not be on here. And Ms. Senia, Just Senia Rivera, our wonderful board chair, who is on here with me. So I think I have had, I have everyone captured. Yes?
Pedro.
Pedro, I didn't say Pedro, man. So this is my team. And so you're looking for a brief overview. So let me say, New Haven Public Schools, BOE and staff have launched remote learning with a great deal of success despite some large challenges that we have. With the assistance of the State Department of Education, we secured funding to increase our devices by more than 11,000 and to shore up connectivity, allowing more than 89% to engage by the second week of school. Reaching other families, principals, teachers and central office staff, we continue to file resolutions for families to improve their experiences. That experience has greatly changed from the spring with everyone connected through Google Classroom and Google Meet at the standard for live instruction. Now, last spring, we did not have those. We were just getting acclimated to this new normal. But this year is a much better approach through a lot of training that we have engaged in with our families, with our teachers, with other staff members. Students are working on synchronous and asynchronous activities and assignments for four days and four hours on Wednesdays. With huge efforts to build a capacity of teachers, students and frankly, families who are in need for our youngest learners, this fall, we have raised a bar for what students and families should expect. It's been an amazing district community effort. And working with the board, we have gained approval to begin to bring some students with disabilities back into the classroom, those who are medically fragile and who cannot participate in remote learning in some of our separate settings. I'm sure you've been watching our Board of Education. Don't tell me if not. I know you've been watching New Haven's Board of Education meetings. And last time, we had about six and a half more hours of board meeting. And we were able to have the board pass through for us to accept some of our students or very challenging students back into the classrooms. All students receive laptops, Chromebooks or iPad. That was one of my goals. And I must say, I'm happy to report that we've fulfilled that goal in making sure that they have that. The state supported us with KJET hotspots. And we were able to support our families who are in need of connectivity. Eight schools are kind of being impacted as we suspect another nine will be upgrading, upgrading the controller. We have discovered through this that two of our major controllers that support the internet or the broad with in our broadband, in our system, in our schools, are working very poorly. And so when students log on, they're being disconnected. And so many of our teachers have come in to use a classroom to serve the students. And so we discovered that problem. We're now trying to get up to $600,000 to make sure that we repair or put in new, new controllers in our, in our building to support our students. We also saw a sharp increase in attendance in weeks one and two. And we were able to report to our board that we had at least 18,000 students up to last Wednesday connecting. Now, I didn't say engaged, I say connecting to the classroom. We're monitoring that engagement, what that looks like. We have also shift to some family supports during this time for students or risk of engagement because last year, we had some challenges with that. But I must say, I'm also proud of the work of the Youth Family Community Engagement. They have set up a call center staffed with staff members to support our families. We also have a site that they can log on to to get tech support. We also have Teach Teacher Live. I think we call it for teachers to get technological support. So we are way ahead in doing a lot to support staff, students and families. We continue to support students' special education services remotely as much as we can. The majority of students with disabilities are part of their general education classroom, utilizing the same synchronous and asynchronous learning as much as we can. English learners continue to receive tier one instruction as designated on the plan we submitted for reopening. So we continue to support a lot of them through, what do you call that? Through some electronic systems where they're getting Spanish and English.
Imagine learning.
Imagine learning. Yeah, that's with me. Imagine learning. So all schools are engaged in remote learning. I was happy to visit some classrooms and peek into their classrooms and say hello to students. And they're very excited about the fact that they can see their teachers and see their friends. And this morning, they say hello to NBC reporters. And we're happy to see that their classes were engaged in what is going on. The goal is to schedule and to maximize live instruction and engagement for students. We are tracking down very, very consistently those students we cannot find. Could be a number of things. It could be that they did not have, collected their computers. It could be that they're having some connectivity issues. It could be that they have moved and we don't have some of the information that we need to have to track them down. But I know that work is, is going on. The estimated cost of reopening our school between eight million and $13 million, depending on the duration of the pandemic. And we are very challenging sharing New Haven. Our board, we wanted to make sure that we had bus monitors and all the buses to support our students, but we're not able to do that now due to the cut in the funding that we were supposed to receive. But we understand the logistics behind those. But we are hoping to make sure that New Haven is a system that is considered one of the best urban school districts in Connecticut. So we're going to do our best to make sure all the programs work. Communication, we have used Parent Link, parent training, online orientation. That went on very great. You should go on our website, you see the messages from principals to their staff and students around online orientation. We're open housing, we're doing YouTube. We developed our own YouTube channel so we could reach more families. We have done radio appearances, we have done door to door, we have done webinars. We have an every day Wednesday and training. Goal is high standards of instruction across schools. So all the support systems we're putting in place to make this work for our students. That was not brief, was it?
No, that was brief. Thank you.
If I may, if I may, Dr. Lopez, just a little bit more information as well. Thank you, Dr. Tracy, for that, that update. Very exciting as well. Also, as the, as an agency, as the State Department of Ed, as we mentioned already, in partnership, we wanted to make you aware of some of the monitoring mechanisms that are in place, and this was shared with New Haven. Certainly, they're collecting attendance and Dr. Sherman has been doing that regularly and submitting participation data to the State Department of Ed. The, we're having our cross-divisional remote monitoring meetings, and that's working with the leadership team in New Haven. We've had a discussion about how might we do some virtual walkthroughs with the team, like you said, peeking in and seeing how the classrooms are doing, how the students are doing. Doing walkthroughs is nothing new when we partner with our Alliance Districts and our Commissioner Network Schools. So we're trying to see how can we do this in a virtual space. We're looking at the Remote Learning Plan, which was delivered, and looking at the Alliance District funding as well because we know that there might be some adjustments that might be needed in order to support the remote learning. We've talked about some focus groups perhaps. And certainly today is one of our mechanisms, bringing the team to you today to share this update. Dr. Lopez?
Thank you. Let me go back and do something that I should have done in the beginning, which is introduce the members of the committee, the board members of the committee. So I just want to ask them to wave their hands so you can see them. First one is Erin Benham, Woody Exley, would you say hello? Donald Harris and Bonnie Burr. And of course, Estela Lopez and the chair. So thank you so much for the report and the update. And we're looking forward to having a dialogue with you, to learn from you what has worked and what are the areas of challenges. So I'm going to invite first the members of the committee to ask you questions. If you raise your hand and just unmute yourself. Woody, go ahead, Woody.
It looks as if you invested quite a bit of time and effort in preparing the teachers to teach remotely. Can you say a little bit about how that worked out and what you learned? And how, you know, the effect of that?
So I'm going to let my team members say what they need to say. We're going to start with the Link Spring training through Ms. Keisha Hannens. Keisha?
Good afternoon and thank you for this opportunity to speak with you today. So of course, we were thrust into this pandemic in March and we had to transform our instructional practices. In order to do that, we recognized that we needed to provide support at all levels of the organization. And that included central office, on down to our schools. And so the last two weeks in June, our, our teachers implemented a peer-to-peer model of training teachers on how to utilize Google Classroom, setting up Google Meets, if you will, and just started to get our teachers familiar with the Google platform. From there, we, Dr. Tracy had the New Haven Public Schools reopening committee. And I was on a team, led a team of about 17 to 18 educators and community members in the district on the Instruction Subcommittee. And in that committee, we were committed to finding someone that can help us transform our instructional practices. And we decided upon Link Spring. Where Link Spring is an online virtual PD platform where teachers are able to access PD at any time from anywhere. But we did not just focus on our teachers. Our paraprofessionals are also included on the platform as well as our administrators and central office staff. And so we implemented summer institutes for learned leaders as well as teachers to participate in these institutes, to shore up their instruction and get them familiar with the spring platform. And then as the school year began, we also implemented two full days for all teachers throughout the entire district on the Link Spring platform for additional professional development. I'll let Ms. Velazquez pick up on PD that's ongoing now and throughout the year.
Sure. So additional support to that is we create a remote learning schedule that actually has a shortened Wednesday. The students have a four-hour day, the teachers are here six and a half hours, and the hours in the afternoon are dedicated to both professional development and preparations and planning. And so every Wednesday, that we knew that we needed a chunk of time to continue to support everyone's learning of the platform and how to enrich, you know, instruction through creating plans on Google Classroom that would, would over time become more elaborate. Right now, there is a lot of whole group happening and we're helping teachers learn how to manage online to do small group instruction, which we know is more sound. And so that's where we're headed. And so we have a weekly check-in with them to support them in that manner. So we think that's a really strong schedule as well.
And one thing we should not leave out, we also have parent training to train our parents, both in English and Spanish, how to access Google Classroom. That was very, very helpful because we realized there was a challenge on that side. Still a work in progress to get more parents trained, but we trained a bulk of parents, a lot of parents, on how to do that.
And Woody, any, any other questions before?
Oh, it just sounds as if it was a monumental task to take that on.
Yeah. Oh, I did mention that. We also have a teacher help live, which Dr. Tracy spoke about, just to give you that information. It's every afternoon and evening, teachers can log in and make an appointment to work with someone who is more expert on Google Classrooms as they're doing their plan. So even after hours, teachers are putting in quite a bit of time because they're very dedicated to, you know, let's make a difference. But let's not just do what we did in the spring. Everyone is committing to engaging more students and make it better as well.
And a parent help dot live.
And a parent help.
We launched a number of things to support.
Do you think there's any sharing going on among school districts to share best practices?
We haven't gone there yet. We're trying to get our house in order first and then we can share out.
I will say this, I had, in order to create that schedule, that remote learning schedule, I did call a lot of my colleagues in many different districts. And, and I also spoke to Irene quite a bit. So it was, it was something that didn't just come together quickly. We did look at what a lot of people were doing in the state to inform what we were going to do.
And we, I would just add, we have a lot of sharing happening amongst our staff as well. And so, for example, digital tools to help us and help our teachers make lessons more engaging. As they became more sophisticated in their practices, they recognized that we also needed to purchase some other platforms to help them, help them make their lessons engaging. So we purchased Care Deck, Screen Passify and Padlet. And that came directly from our teachers informing us from other teachers they knew, either across the state or their own research to help them transform their practices as well.
I must not forget Special Education and I don't want to steal their thunder, but they have put in quite a bit of training for special ed teachers how to operate in this type of learning environment.
And if I may add something additionally, in looking at the professional development needs across the district, we realized that our special populations, including English learners, you know, are in need. So the first of the, I guess, PD Wednesdays that we had just yesterday, the focus was explicitly on English learner strategy and how is it that we can provide them with the needed scaffolds so that they can have better access during distance learning, you know, to the content that they need to be learning.
I think, Erin, you have your hand up. Ask a question? Erin?
Good afternoon. I actually have a few questions. I'll start with the special populations. You know, during your hearing last month, that was my concern then, the special populations of special ed and, and ELs. I was glad to hear that you're bringing back some of your special ed. I believe next week is what the board decided on, that special ed. And Dr. Tracy, is the number, did you say the number of how many are coming? I heard it was 125. Is that how many are returning next week?
Yes, at the start, yeah, that's correct.
Right. So the number at the start is not, is not actually 125. Probably half of that number. And then over the next couple of weeks, it gets to 125 and then it's completed.
And that's out of how many altogether that are special ed in New Haven?
So we have a little over 3,400. But these are the students that we're talking about are in our specialized classrooms. So in the specialized classrooms, we have probably about a little over 300 students within our special.
Okay. What are the plans that are in place for the other students that are not, not coming back? I know you, Ms. Jackson, you had spoken at the hearing, your concern as well, the implementation of IEPs and the services that were given to special ed children. What is in place that perhaps is different than it was in March? I guess is probably what I'd like to hear more about as well as the EL population.
I'll talk about it first from a compliance point of view and then also really just from teaching and learning. Special education have a lot of compliance. That's, you know, a part of special education process. So the main thing is that we have to make sure that all of our timelines, that we're reading all the timelines by way of our evaluation, by way of having our PCT meeting. That's a little bit different than what happened in March. There was a lot more leniency in start of timelines and consideration for completing things by way of compliance. So right now, we're doing things in accordance to the same way that we would do them if we were in person. The additional things that I think we've done by way of the teaching and learning components, enough to be able to adapt to IEP, is really making sure, as we're talking about our students, our students, the majority of our students are in general education classrooms and being able to access the via virtual, the fact that we have, I don't want to say ramped up, but I think that would be the term, you know, these ramped up our teaching training or our model, our students are having access to them well. In addition to that, what has been very helpful for our students in particular is really the notion of synchronous learning, being able to have a lot of interaction with students to be able to do things like maybe like in the line to their, your IEP goals. Those things have been a significant change from, from March. Because we know that our children require a lot of school instruction. So that, that level of interaction with the teachers has been a little bit different. The other thing that we've done and we ramped up or in a scale of the amount of, in addition to its training, but the amount of, of our online educational software that folks have been using. So we've had a portion of those who've been used a lot, even like Lexel, to be able to do some skill development. But we've been continuing to do that and continuing to build on that. So those are the main things, I think, that we've done. Again, is to continue to, our compliance piece of all of that kind. But then also really looking at the manner by which we're utilizing synchronous learning and then also looking at how we're utilizing some additional educational software to support some of the teachers. And a lot of our teachers, what we also done, we're making an exploitation across the board. Some people are not as technologically savvy as others, but created the creation of virtual classrooms. Essentially, we spent a lot of time on that so that folks can actually get, they, you know, have a foundation lesson, you know, they're doing that, they're doing the program instruction on different, you know, areas that they'll actually realize in a classroom. It's a virtual classroom in order to enable them. And then of course, our goal to bring back, you know, all of our specialized classrooms, which is another challenge for the remote.
So that is the goal, just to take this original 60 to 125 and then eventually explain to all special ed children and, and EL children? Is that sort of in the plan at this point?
It does go right. And in terms of English learners, what it is different from the spring is again, that this year, we are able, as Stephanie mentioned, able to make use of, you know, Google Meet, you know, as the platform so that there is more face-to-face, you know, instruction, which is one thing that it was definitely missing. I mean, we are supplementing also the instruction through, you know, platforms such as Imagine Learning, you know, in the K6 range, you know, to provide them with additional support. It's a program that they can access remotely and that it really addresses their linguistic needs. In addition, the bilingual students, you know, are accessing also another platform that is called Espanol and they are receiving services through bilingual certified teachers through Google Meet. So that's something different from the spring. We are in the exploratory process, you know, knowing how to bring, you know, specific populations of English learners. The focus, it will be in students when interrupted or limited, you know, formal education, some of our newcomer students. But understanding that we do have some constraints that I would like to put on the table such as, you know, our teacher union, you know. So in a sense, I mean, we are bringing, we need to resupply all our staff, you know, to ensure that voluntarily are able to come in prior until our board approves, you know, us coming into the building.
Okay. And Dr. Tracy, a question I had too is earlier, you had, you had mentioned that there was 18,000 that you connected. You made the reference of connected, not necessarily engaged. Is there any kind of numbers yet that you can share? Or maybe Lisa or Irene, if you have numbers to share of what the engagement looks like? Again, I recall that, you know, from March, our concern at the state was that you had almost 2,000 students that were unaccounted for. And I'd like to get a sense of where that number is now.
So let me take that to my team member, Dr. Michelle Sherman.
Good afternoon, everyone. So we have been breaking down the data and trying to get really an estimate on engagement based on what the teachers are recording in terms of remote attendance, just as a, as a quick measure. And for the first week, we had only 65%, what we call fully participating. So they indicated that they were, were present in the virtual classes both days. And that did go up in the second week to 77% fully participating and another 12% partially participating or engaging. So 90% of students were engaging in some kind of remote learning last week, which is a very significant difference from what we saw in the spring. We saw the same kind of trend from week one to week two with our L population. They went from 75% engaging the first week to 89% the second week. And our overall special education population went from 72% to 86%. But I will note that a subset of the special ed population, in particular, the students that are in those self-contained classrooms where their disabilities impede their ability to access the remote learning, we did see that only, I believe, upwards of maybe 40% were fully engaged.
Okay. And that's a big difference.
I would also add that we're expecting this number to increase even further. This week, our schools are passing out the hotspots. And so we know we have over 1,000 students that, families who have requested the hotspot. So we're anticipating this number to increase.
And also, I was at a school this morning, they were passing out supplemental materials still to families. It's not just around technology. They wanted to make sure that the students have in hand other materials to work with, to supplement what they were doing online.
And then I guess my last question is, you, you had spoken a little bit about your outreach to those, those families that are unaccounted for. And, you know, we had that conspiracy. And, you know, we had that concern back in the spring as well. Is there any way of knowing, are these the same families that are unaccounted for? Are these another set of, you know, almost ten percent of children that are not engaged? Is there any sense of knowing who these children are or where they are?
Let me turn that to our youth family community engagement director, Gemma Joseph Blumkin.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for the question. Yes, we are equally concerned around those students who are showing a pattern of not connecting. And we are seeing that many of the students are those same students who struggled over the summer for, for a variety of reasons. Some of it is the technology and as, as Ms. Redhannon's pointed out, that will improve. However, some of it are families dealing with a variety of issues beyond the typical concerns around academics. Families are dealing with social emotional issues and other concerns that are prohibiting them from connecting in the way that we would like to see them connected. The, our response to that is to deepen our community engagement activities to ensure that we are able to refer families to community-based supports that would help them get what they need so that they could in turn be able to connect in a way that would support their children. So it's, you know, so those issues range from families who are distressed, family who are dealing with economic issues, family who are dealing with children that they're struggling to manage. And in all of those cases, we're trying to understand what those needs are and to refer them to services that would support them and help them get closer to engagement.
Thank you. And then, Stelle, I just have one last question. I'll hand it over to my other colleagues. And that, that basically goes with, earlier you had said with the special ed population coming back, your highest needs coming back. We also know the importance of early intervention. Is there any plan in place for our young, younger children? Our pre-K to say too, that I'm sure having a very difficult time with devices and even support materials. We know how important those years are. Are there anything in place of bringing that, perhaps bringing those back, those children as well, earlier than November?
So in the grand scheme of things, we had presented to the board a phased-in plan in which, which we had also presented in the state, I would say, folks around bringing in students in a staggered manner and pre-K through third grade was on the plan. And also, and then we, we ramped it up to pre-K through sixth grade and then high school would be more remote learning in that manner or some kind of quasi hybrid plan for them. That plan probably did not go through, but in our recent conversation, as soon as we see how things are working, we are also planning to bring back to our board the need for bringing in these students. Probably by that time, we're in school anyhow because it's a marking, marking period will end sometime in November. And we are preparing our school right now that depending on the nature of the pandemic, we are planning to quickly transition into, into the hybrid plan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Dawn?
Yeah, you have to, you have to forgive me. Erin took, I've been writing questions down and Erin, I had four questions down here and Erin took three of them.
The educator's in us, Dawn.
We're gonna have to rotate questions. And then I don't have a great connection today. Maybe either that or my old ears, but I'm not catching everything. But tell me again, you're come, you're revising your plan in November? What are you doing in November?
We are not revising our plan. The same plan we presented with the state department of education as the hybrid plan. Where we'll be bringing in pre-K through third grade and then the middle school, like fourth through twelfth grade would be on the staggered, you know, two days in, two days off kind of situation and one day to be taking time to cleanse the schools back and then starting them back. That, that is a plan we have with the state department. I was mentioning that recently, we were presenting a phased-in plan to get the kids back into school. And then we had changed from the pre-K to three to accommodate pre-K to sixth grade. That was a slight change we were putting in there, but the plan is the same plan, hasn't changed.
Okay, now, I also heard eighteen thousand plus students, which I know is a fact. Now, is everybody who is home have access to a Chromebook or iPad or something?
Yes.
So everybody is, is taken care of, okay?
Everyone has access. We're hoping that everyone had come back. Even today, some parents were changing out their computers that may have been broken. So I saw that happening today in some schools as I visited, but everyone has access to a device.
Okay, that, but that may not include that two thousand that are sitting out there.
We have been providing devices and reaching out. We never collected devices back from last March. The only rates we took were the terminal rates, such as seniors or the last grade of school. So many students have devices at home. We've reached out in every sort of way to let families know devices were still available and that multiple devices were available for the family. So that if there are five kids in a family, we've offered five devices.
Okay.
So the students last year, many of them, they, they do have the device, but having it and not using it is a different story.
Okay.
The matter of tracking them down and making sure they're using it to log on and do what they need to do. That's a challenge.
Now, I, I know what has happened in my district. When students log in and so you see their face on the screen. They, do they have the ability to put a, like a screenshot up there? So I'm logging in, I'm saying I'm here and then there's a screenshot up here and they're gone. Do you, you track them, you track, I'm telling you. I was, I was a high school principal in my other life, so I, I know what they do. And, but we've stopped that in my district and I just, you, you are able to track them all the time. So they're not checking in and then leaving.
So it's interesting that you bring that up. We just had our executive meeting and we were discussing that same issue. How do you make sure that that picture they put up, that they're, they're still there, they're not gone off, gone to sleep or something and the picture's still hanging up there? And so we are, we were looking at what can we do to make sure we mitigate that issue? So you may want to share with us what happened in that, what they did to make sure we can see those faces.
If I may, so building capacity around that is learning how to use these digital tools, right? So learning how to use chat, learning how to use discussion boards, requiring the students to engage in not just showing us their image, but also how they engage with, interacting, you know, with a, with a partner in a breakout room or, you know, one group is with the para or one group is with the teacher, organizing that. So engagement is about participation, right?
You got it, you got it. Dr. Tracy, you may know my superintendent in Bloomfield, Dr. Thompson?
Yes, I do. He was a mentor of mine when I was a principal.
Call him and talk to him. He'll, he'll tell you what, what we're doing.
Okay.
Okay. That, that's it for me.
Thank you, though. You know, if you ever, if I ever see your picture, Dawn, I'm gonna question you. Where are you?
I'm sleeping somewhere.
Bonnie, do you have any questions for the team? You're, you're good. I, I have a number of questions. You know, I'm interested in the synchronous piece. How much of the four hours is synchronous? I'm, I'm concerned about doing things synchronous because it, what I fear, what I do know from higher education, which is my background, is that the pedagogical approach changes when you use technology. It has to change. But the challenge we have in these meetings is we're pretending to do these meetings the same way we used to do it face-to-face. It doesn't quite work. We, we haven't learned, we haven't had the training to do these meetings in a more powerful and meaningful way because we haven't had the, the, the training to do that. But you have to change the pedagogy. You really have to do things in a different way. And it can be very engaging. My daughter studied part of her doctoral program in, you know, through technology and she found some of the classes very engaging. But it requires training of the teachers and so on. So I want to understand how much do you do synchronous, how much do you do asynchronous? And how, how does, how is that shaped in the school day and in the different grades? So I, I need some background information on that if I, if I can have it. Thank you.
Sure. Dr. Lopez, so let me describe, if, if you think about our model in this manner, we have an elementary model, a middle school model and a high school model, right? Because in elementary, we've got one teacher, she's planning the whole day across multiple blocks. And the way we set up our day is we have five instructional blocks, right? So let me explain, like just for literacy, for instance, it's a ninety-minute block. We are not expecting students to turn on their camera and be there for the ninety minutes. What we're saying is that that's the part of the day when we're engaging students in, maybe there's a mini lesson. There could be some phonics work. There could be some time with teacher, time reading alone and maybe some time when they're in a smaller group where the para is in a smaller Google Meet where the kids are either speaking to each other or working even independently and only asking for the para for assistance, right? Those are multiple modes in that one block, right? So it could be overall for an, an individual, how a student experiences that block is only maybe two twenty-minute segments are really intently on the screen. The rest of the time is assignment time, okay? And so after the ninety minutes of literacy are done, we move on to mathematics, a similar block where, so you can imagine that what we're trying to do is not have live instruction for long periods of time. Have it be small instruction, small group instruction, but it takes a lot of planning. I would say that it's almost twice as much planning, right? Because you have to understand how to set up your Google classroom in order to do those rotations, in order to give directions, adjust the right amount of directions. So you can imagine the challenges, especially with the younger kids, right? The older kids are a little bit better at following those directions, but they're still learning. And I, I know it'll get better over time, right? Those teachers learn more tricks, right? How to use a whiteboard, how to use, how to use different, different, you know, online platforms. So that's, that's where we're headed. A lot more small group instruction, smaller segments of time. And for the day, we have a six and a half hour day. About fifty percent of that might be on average, right? Because we're doing less with the younger kids and more with the older kids, okay? Yeah.
Well, about half is synchronous and about half is not synchronous.
Yeah.
And what is the maximum number of students that you have in, per group?
Our, our cap is twenty-seven per classroom. And for pre-k, I believe it's eighteen. Yeah.
Okay, that, that, that's quite a, the, the other thing is I know from the community colleges here in Connecticut that they did intensive training of teachers and many teachers were, many faculty were teaching online already, but not everybody participated. Did all your teachers participate in the training? Did you ensure that they took the training? Because again, as you just tried, this totally changes the way you teach. You know, you're not only in this stage, you know, you're using technology as a facilitator and you become much more of a facilitator. So do everybody go through the training?
Yes, absolutely. And then we're taking attendance on Wednesday also and shoring up. You know, as they need it, we're, we're doing extensive training, ongoing training. And, and there's some things that are absolutely essential for everyone, but we also know that the best PD is also differentiated. So there also will be coming some choice because different people will learn at different paces and will need different things. So we're, we're gonna build that in as well.
Okay. And one of the things that we all know, we, we had a, a board meeting about two weeks ago and it was, you know, we wanted to do it face-to-face because we are very committed that if the teachers and staff have to go back to the classroom, the board also needed to meet face-to-face. And we had a lot of technology issues. So here we are, we're a sophisticated board, we have the best technology and there were a lot of issues. You couldn't hear people, you couldn't do that. So I'm imagining a family that is not technology savvy and suddenly they have issues. I know in higher education, there's such a thing as a help desk. And you call the help desk or you, you talk to the help. So I'm wondering what sort of support, when you talk about support, what sort of support exists to help people? And help desks tend to be techies that talk technology and not necessarily English or Spanish. So how do you provide that support when the technology fails? Because I think that's another challenge that, you know, people don't tend to ignore is not having the computer. You know, I, I have my computer here and suddenly it says, you have too, too many things open. You know, close your, your iPad and close your phone because, you know, the internet doesn't have enough capacity. So how do you provide that support to students and families, especially that are not necessarily savvy?
So, so we, I must say that when we just started out, it's like everything was crashing. People were being kicked off of, of the program. They started, they were off again, started and then off again. But we had, we have some very savvy and techy teachers who really support their families. We have, we have some of our professionals who even go into their homes if they were next door to help the families out. So we have a lot of hands-on way of supporting. And, and that's why we saw the reason for setting up the teacher help hotline and the family help hotline to help families. We have some great support going into our families. Is it enough to help twenty-one thousand children? Probably not, but that's a great start, we think, for us on our side. With the school teachers helping, with these other extra support we added to help our families. We have families who struggle with and even know how to set up their hotspots and their computers. I just heard that this morning and they were helping. The principal would take them and walk them through the process. So there's a lot of hands-on, hand-holding and helping people because our job is to support our families for the sake of course to them. And that's what I see happening.
Okay, thank, thank you. I, I really want to commend you. I know that, that you have the best intentions and you're trying to do incredibly difficult work at a, at a very challenging time. So I do want to commend you, but I also want to be candid and find out for you, what has been your biggest challenge? And also, on the other side, what have you been, what do you feel you've been more successful about? So.
So if I were to say one of the biggest challenges that I had or challenge that I had was not knowing whether or not I was gonna get a device into every child's hand. But with the support of the state and with other support, we were able to do that. And so that's a significant help to us and satisfy one great need that we had. In terms of a level of success, I must say the level of dedication that I see these staff members put into place, it's not easy, but the level of dedication to support the families is phenomenal on our side. Are there still glitches? Yes. Will we continue to have challenges? Yes. Because every time the teachers will log on to the computers in the school buildings and they're being thrown off because of our old systems that we have, that's a challenge. And so that's why we are trying to mitigate those challenges now and needing funding to be able to do that because it's very glaring. And we don't want it to be on our side. That is because of what we would not have in place while our families are not able to access the learning that they need.
If I were a new district beginning to do this, what would be your advice in terms of not inventing the, the will? What would you say to me that I need to make sure that happens in order for me to, to engage successfully in, in the distance education process? What would be your advice?
Rather pointed. Give me some more money. Give me some more funding so I can get these controllers in the, in the schools. Because we may have a controller that has about sixteen or so schools or ten or more schools under them. And when the controller is not working, then that's when we have problem with those students. We identified two right now that the, the estimate from the IT department is gonna be about six hundred thousand dollars to, to, to get that done and done quickly. So what many teachers have been doing, instead of now losing the school, they're going back home and, you know, internet service. And, you know, internet service is still somewhat shaky. So this is what, this is our great need right now, to get that up and running properly. We try to do a lot of resets and then you reset the night before or then, and then it, it works a little bit and then start. Even at the central office, we're fading out sometimes.
Yeah. No, that, that's what I was asking, a, a very, very good. I, again, I want to commend you and thank you for coming before us and, and preparing to give us an update. We are very interested in how you're progressing, what you're doing, your plans, and to ensure that all the students are included and have an opportunity. Let me ask you one last question. I'm sure when preparing for today, you sort of said, well, they're gonna ask us this, they're gonna ask us the other. What was the question that you prepared for and I didn't ask, or we didn't ask?
What a good question.
That's such an awesome question, team members.
So I would say, and we were talking about it yesterday, just, you know, in our environment, in the urban environment, many of our families have multiple kids at home. And so as we were investing in Chromebooks and seeking funders to help us support to become one-to-one, we didn't think about, we need headphones for our students. Because you may have multiple children in the same room and the teacher's teaching. So that's a lot of noise coming in at one time. And so that's something, a lesson learned. I would say, you know, the, I think, best thing that we were able to do was to provide support to our teachers and let them do it at their own pace. That would be some advice I would give to another district. Be patient, work with your staff. This is a lot of work on our staff and a lot of work. People may think they're, they're at home, you know, teachers and the kids are not in school. This is requiring us to do a lot to shift our practices. But that would be something I would think of. I don't know, team, anything else you may have learned?
I would, I would add about the, you know, this is growth model, right? And so you didn't ask, how do we know that we're hitting the mark?
Let me respond to Keisha one more. Reminds me what she, when you were talking, is that we're going now back to the one-room school, but it's at the home, where you have students from different grades. And one teacher teaching, you know, trying to impact and trying to manage, and you're doing it remotely. Because I'm older, at least, I wanted to say before I forgot, so.
That's fine. I, I just wanted you to know that we, we know that a lot of the things that we're trying out are, are untested. It's, you know, we, we put the very best remote model that we could from talking to a lot of people. But we know we also are going to have to be savvy and adjust. And so like for next month, I, I'm expecting to do some focus groups. I want to talk to students, to teachers, to families and say, you know, is this working? Are, do we have the stamina for this all day, all this live, you know? What, how are we doing is a really important question to ask all along. And so we, we plan to do that, because again, very theoretical, no one's done this like this before. And we want to make sure we're, we're headed in the right direction.
And the final. Go ahead, Paul, go ahead.
Yeah, I would say just remaining flexible and being able to move through these things that, like, with the infrastructure, we've come up with solutions and patchwork, but longer-term solutions that will mitigate issues. As Evie talked about with the instruction, we, if we don't see something working, the team as well as the teachers are prepared to make changes and move it forward to the next thing. And just being agile right now is a key thing.
And, and may I say, my, my finance guy who controls all of the money here in your average school system, Mr. Philip Penn is on, and he may want to ask, since you opened the gate to ask questions about support, Mr. Phil Penn.
I was kind of hoping you would ask, how much money can we send you to help you be successful? But I didn't hear that question or question.
Yeah, this is the accountability committee. This is not the, the funding committee. I'm sorry to call you.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Again, I think on behalf of the committee, I can honestly say that we commend you. We know that you care. And we know, I really appreciate the, the notion that you're very much aware that you're inventing something new. And in, in a way, when you do that, you're gonna make mistakes, you know? If you look at the word, I'm a word person, and if you look at the word research, it's, it comes from search, from searching. And what you do through that searching, you do it again and again and again until you improve. And through research, you find a better way of doing things. So it is a journey. It is a difficult and challenging journey. I'm reminded, I don't know if you ever saw it, I got, uh, three years ago, a video from, it was made in Germany, of this daughter that sends her father, an older man, an iPad. And she goes to visit him and he's cutting things and he's using the iPad as a cutting board. And then she's looking at it, her eyes are popping, and then he cuts the onions and he cuts the green peppers. And then he puts it under the faucet and then he puts it in the washing machine. And, you know, he didn't realize an iPad was an iPad, you know? He thought it was a cutting board. So I'm imagining the fact that you make technology accessible doesn't mean people know how to use it necessarily. Complicated. But anyway, again, I don't know if my fellow board members have any other comments or questions, but I want to thank you for coming today. Yeah, Erin, go ahead.
Yeah, I also like to commend you for, especially with the, the recent vote of bringing back the children, you know, starting with that small group and increasing it and so forth. And I, I commend those educators for recognizing that that's what was needed. And I, I wish you the most success, that that could only get larger and larger as you move through that. Because it's, I'm a true believer, especially with those special populations, that face-to-face is what's absolutely needed. So I wish you the best of luck and I commend you, your board, your, your, your whole staff, and especially the teachers that recognize that.
Thank you, Erin. Anyone else?
Just wanna say thank you for coming forward today. My friend, Ms. Rivera out there, just tell my, tell my buddy Ed Joyner I said hi.
Will, will do. I was just gonna make a quick comment to Ms. Lopez, that she could come to our board meetings and say just everything that she just said, that would be great.
And you can, you can use the video. Now it's a video, so you can, you know.
I might do that. I might do that. Thank you.
Thank you so much for attending. It's very important for us to see you and to know that you're supporting the efforts of the school system, especially going back to, to face-to-face. Anybody else? Woody or Bonnie? Okay, fantastic. Thank you so much. And I think that brings the meeting to end, right, Erin? Nothing else, nothing?
There's no other items on the agenda, so yes, you can make a motion.
I'm not gonna ask for a motion to adjourn, because I, I have the power to do that.
Stella, do you want the committee to stay on? Stella, do you want the committee to stay on?
No, I think, I think we're fine. I think we're fine. Thank you so much, okay?
Thank you, Dr. Tracy and the team.
Thank you, everyone.
Take care.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.